We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections and efficiently administer from the electoral point of view. C, the deposit that independent candidates must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with costs. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. D, those who contest as individual independent candidates and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit their remaining votes because they would be given a clear and equal opportunity to an option to contest as a political party. E, we strongly discourage by election to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in elections. I thank you.
Thank you, next?
My name is Tavok Malangwu from Dr. J. S. Moroka. I'm a RCT member, regional command team in Ganga of the EFF. Electoral amendment bill, as the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and the parliament. Over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill will, this bill is not going to strengthen our democracy instead, it's just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must contest national general elections on the following conditions. A, the threshold for the nomination of independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand. These must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. There B, the reason why we're saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest because it, because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections and that will be impossible for efficiently administrator from the electoral point of view. C, the deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties and must be not refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. D, those who contest as individual independent candidates and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit their remaining votes because they will have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as political party. Lastly, we strongly discourage by election to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament, legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in elections. Thank you.
Thank you, next?
Greetings, my name is Tavis Otsoane from Ward Seventeen in Stiffchate, the local municipality. I'm also the regional deputy chairperson of EFF here in Ganga. Electoral amendment B, as the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must contest national general elections on the following conditions. Point A, the threshold for the nomination of independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand and these must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. Point B, the reasons we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from, from an electoral point of view. Point C, the deposit that independent candidates must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Point D, those who contest as individual candidates, those who contest as individual independent candidates and get the higher votes than is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit their remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. Point E, we strongly discourage by elections to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in elections. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to invite hands for another set. We also want to acknowledge our colleague, member of the National Assembly, Honorable Kaya Kanyatkeza, who has also joined us to this proceedings. Thank you, Honorable Kaza. Can I invite hands? Ten hands. I'll start, yeah? One. Two at the back. Three. Four. Number four. No, no. Yes. Four. Number five. Number six. Yes. Number seven. Number eight. Yeah. Yes. Number nine. Number nine with the jacket. And number ten. Yeah, with the notes. Thank you, and then we'll come to another set. You can start.
Greetings to everyone in the house. My name is Fortunitas Nwobilinlappo from Ward Five, Emma Khazeni, and I'm the secretary of the ward. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest national general election on the following conditions. Three A, the threshold for the nomination of individual candidate must not be less than twenty thousand and these must be people who are registered to vote and IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reason we are saying the threshold must be high for those wishing to contest is because of it is low. We are going to have a thousand of candidates for provincial and national election and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit that paid by political parties and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidate will come with cost. And those who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Those who contest as individual independent candidate and get higher votes than is required to get a and a weight in parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. We strongly discourage by election to replace independent candidate who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will be permanently be in election. I submit.
Thank you, next?
Thank you very much. Greetings to the parliament. My name is Vincent Guazela from Ward Twenty Eight here in Stiffchate, the local municipality. As the EFF, we will never support the bill because as a country we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by the people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest national general elections on the following conditions. The threshold for the nomination of the independent candidate must not be less than twenty thousand and these must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is low. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidate must pay must pay be the same as the deposit paid by political parties and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of the independent candidate will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Those who contest as individual independent candidate and get the higher votes than is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. We strongly discourage by elections to replace independent candidate who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will be permanently be in elections. Thank you, I submit.
Thank you, sorry. Honorable Kuta requests you to repeat your name. And say name.
Thank you. My name is Vincent Guazela.
Thank you, next?
Thank you. Greetings to the house and thanks for any initiative made by the parliament to come to the people. The Freedom Shutter stated that the people shall govern. My name is Tavis O'Tlas Malango from Zunza Sunparan Royal Family in District M'Kobola, Tembesile Han Municipality. I'm a member of an EFF. Here I got submission. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and the parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. But two, this bill is not going to strengthen our democracy instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. Number three, but since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest national general election on the following conditions. Three point, three A, the threshold for the nomination of independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand and these must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. Three B, the reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is low. It is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electronic point of view. Three C, the deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Three D, those who contest as individual independent candidates and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit their remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. Three E, which is last, we strongly discourage by elections to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because it's, if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in election. I thank you, that's my submission.
Thank you, next?
Greetings to the house. My name is Omar Asnad Kosa from Ward Eleven, Stiffchate. I'm a member of EFF. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country we do, we do not think that we are ready administratively for, for the bill, both from the IEC and parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy instead, it is just going to be used to inflict infiltrate oversight and legislative process by people who wants to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional, the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must contest a national general election on the following, on the following condition. The threshold for the nomination of independent candidate must not, must not be less than twenty thousand. These must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it, it is low. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national election and that will be impossible for efficiently administer, administer from an electoral, electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidate must pay must be same as the deposit paid by political party, it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidate will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not take chances. D, those who contest as individual independent candidate and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and opinion to contest as political party. E, we strongly discourage by election to replace independent candidate who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if, if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in election. I submit.
Thank you, next?
My name, greetings, my name is Busisi Weshiburi from Tembesile Han. I'm here to emphasize that as the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country it will do, it will, we don't, we do not think that we are ready for the administration for the bill, both of, both the IEC and the parliament, over and above the political challenges it will bring because already as we can see that the IEC is having a heavy load, it can't handle a simple election, it's having problems. And secondly, this bill is not going to strengthen our democracy instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative processes by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. As you can see now, the EFF is the only political party that is accountable and it accounts to its people moving forward. But since the Constitutional Court has pulled, put a motion, a position, a independent candidate must contest national general elections on the following conditions. A, the threshold for nomination of an independent candidate must not be less than two thousand, twenty thousand and those must be people who are registered to vote and IEC must make sure and to verify those individuals one by one. B, the reasons we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because it, is because of it, because now it is low. We are going to have thousands of candidates of provincial and national elections that will be impossible to ele, elect, efficiently administer from a electoral point of view. Number C, the deposit that must, that independent candidate must pay must be as same as the deposit paid by political parties, it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidate will be, will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Number D, those who contest as individual independent candidate and get higher votes than is required to wait in parliament must forfeit their remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity to, opportunity to contest as a political party. E, we strongly, we strongly discourage by elections to replace independent candidates who, who either die or resign from parliament or, or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in election. I submit.
Thank you, next?
Amanda. Amanda. Mata.
No, eh, eh, I can see fighter, but can we stick to the?
Yeah, yes, Chair, I was just trying to, I saw, I saw two guys there, they were sleeping, so I was just trying to wake them up.
Let, let, let me protect you.
Yes.
I don't want any other person to do the same.
Okay.
So we've outlined the rules and if you go outside the rules, we're trying to protect you and others that are coming. We appreciate that you want to do that.
Okay.
But it's not a space to, to conduct what you're doing.
Thanks, Chair. My name is Peter Massimula, Ward Nineteen, from Chateaute, an EFF member. As a EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both the IEC and the parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. Two, this bill is not going to strengthen our democracy instead, it's just going to be used to infiltrate the oversight and the legislative process by the people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to the collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest national general elections on the following conditions, which Chair, I got five bullets here, from A to E. A, the threshold for the nomination of the independent candidate must not be less than twenty thousand. These must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. Bullet number two, B, the reason we are saying the, the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is low. We are going to have thousands candidates for provincial and national elections that will be impossible to efficiently administer for, from an electrical point of view. C, the deposit that independent candidate must pay the same as the deposit paid by the political parties, it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidate will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not take chances. D, those who contest as individual independent candidates and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit their remaining votes because they have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. Lastly, Chair, E, we strongly discourage by elections to replace independent candidate to either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such permitted, the country will be permanently in election. I salute.
Thank you, next?
Greetings to the committee. My name is Jackson Malaji, the EFF Regional Secretary in Ganga. Electoral bill, electoral amendment bill, as the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. Number two, the bill is not going to strengthen our democracy instead, it is going to be used to infiltrate oversight and legislative process by, by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to the, to a collective but themselves. Number three, but since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest national general election on the following conditions. Number A, the threshold for the nomination of independent candidate must not be less than twenty thousand and the, and these must be people who are registered to vote and I, and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. B, the reason we are saying the threshold be higher B, the reason we are saying the threshold be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is lower. We are not going to have thousands of candidate for provincial, we are going to have thousands of candidate for provincial and national election, and that will, that will be impossible efficiently administer from the electoral point of view. Number C, the deposit that an independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties, and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidate will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Number D, those who contest as individual independent candidate and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit the remaining vote because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as political party. We strongly discourage by election to replace independent candidate who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will be permanently in election, I thank you.
Thank you, next.
Greetings to the House, my name is Reni Mukwena, from Tembesile Han, Wat 26, Member of EFF. Electoral Amendment Bill, as EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready to admin, admin, administer for the bill, both from, both from the IEC and, and the par, and the parliament, over and above the political part, the political challenges it will bring. Two, this bill is not going to strengthen our democracy, instead it's just going to be a u, a used to infiltrate oversight and legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals as that are not accountable to collective but themselves. Three, since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest the na, national general election on the following conditions. A, the threshold for the nomination of independent candidate must not be less than twenty thousand, and this, and this must be people who are registered to vote and, and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reason we, we are saying the threshold must be higher, higher for those who wish to contest is because it's lower. We are going to have thousands of candidate provincial and national election, that will, that will be impossible efficiently administer for the electoral point of view. C, the deposit that, the deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties, and it must not be refundable as the inclusion independent candidate will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. D, this must, those who contest as individual independent candidate and get the higher vote than, than is required, get a weight in parliament must forfeit their, must forfeit their remaining votes because they should, they should have been given a clear and equal opportunity and, and op, option to contest as a political party. Lastly, we strong, we strongly discourage by, by election to, to replace an independent candidate who either die or resign from the parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will be permanently be in election, I submit.
Thank you, next.
Greetings everyone, my name is Kavonina Pemlamabena, from Tembesile Han, Wat 9. Electoral Amendment Bill, as the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from IEC and parliament, over and above the political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy, instead it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legis, legislative process by people who want to use money to control them, who control, to control the individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest national general elections on the following conditions. A, the threshold for the nomination of independent candidate must, must not be less than twenty thousand, and these people must be, and this must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidate for provincial and national election, and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from a electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties. And it must, in, and it must, it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidate will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. To contest as individual independent candidate and get higher votes that is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit their remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. We strongly discourage by election to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such, if such is permitted, the country will be permanently in election, thank you.
Thank you, next.
Greetings to the committee and the House at large, and thanks for bringing the parliament to the people. My name is Maushia Colian Namada, and I'm from Wat 14, Emma Lashen Local Municipality. My submission is as follows. Electoral Amendment Bill, as the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and, and parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This, secondly, this bill is not going to strengthen our democracy, instead it is just going to, to be the, to be used to infiltrate oversight and legislative processes by the people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable, accountable to the collective but themselves. Thirdly, but since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest national general elections on the following conditions. A, the threshold for the nomination of the independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand, and this must be people who are registered to vote and IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. B, the reason we are saying the thresholds must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections, and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. C, the deposit that independent candidates must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties, and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not take chances. D, those who contest as individual independent candidates and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit their remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and, and option to contest at political party. E, we strongly discourage by election to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will be permanently in election, I submit, thank you.
Thank you. We want to establish, because this is your meeting, and we don't want to make mistakes. We're going to also invite Hans, but we want to establish if there's any other input to what members have raised to this meeting. And we're not imposing the, 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 the submission from us. Because you know, we've, we requested that we start and we'll end at half past twelve o'clock, we still have time, but we want to establish whether there's any other view contrary to what you, you want to raise. I'm going to request another handstand, but we just to raise it so that it is on your, your mind, so that when we, towards closing, we'll re-emphasize whether we still have any other submissions that members want to do. Can I recognize Hans? The first one, yes. Number two. Yes, yes, yes. Number three, yes. Number four. Number five, puti. Number six, last cap. Number seven, yeah, last cap, yes. Number eight, you're born on me already, so you've decided. Eh, number eight, number nine. Number ten. You'll be the first one in the, in the, in the next, oh, it's fine, number ten. Ten, okay, I'll be the first one when you come to the next submission. Yeah, you can start, sis.
Thank you very much Chair, and greetings to the battalions of the July Movement and everyone in the House. My name is Dimakajo Palamrazwi, from Wat 21, Emma Lashen. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as the count, we do not think that we are ready administratively for this bill, but both the IEC and parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy, instead it is going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since this Constitutional Court, it has a position, independent candidate must contest national general elections on the following conditions. The threshold of the nomination for independent candidate must not be less than twenty thousand, and this must be people who are registered to vote, more elongor IEC, it lohona verifaya, kamo tu, kamo tu, one by one.
Whereas IEC will be able to verify each and every person.
The reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it's lower. We are going to have thousands of candidate for provincial and national elections, and that will impossibly, that will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidate must be the sa, must pay, must pay, it must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties, and it must not be refundable as inclusion of independent candidate, there's nothing special about them, therefore it, it will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances, are any of you the chance takers here?
We do not want people who take chances.
Those who contest as individual can, independent candidate and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit their remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party, meaning this vote can be transferred or sold to those thieves. We strongly discourage by election to replace independent candidate who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in election. Our people needs to be serviced, they don't want these things of in and out of elections. As for the by-elections, we are not ready and we can't afford them. This is unlike local government elections, as I submit.
Thank you, next.
Chorozani, may peace be unto you all in the House. Eh, my name is Dokas Mfiri, from Emma Lashen, Wat 15. Eh, Electoral Amendment Bill, as the EFF, we do not support the bill because as, as, as a country, we do, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy, instead it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by the people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must contest national general election on the following condition. A, the threshold for the nomination of independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand, and this must be people who are registered to vote, and the IEC must be able to, must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections, and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. C, the deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties, and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will, will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. D, those who contest as individual independent candidate and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit their remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. E, we strongly discourage by election to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permen, the country will permanently be in election, I submit, thank you.
Eh, Sisi? Oteka malakumbani?
My name is Dokas Mfiri, yes.
Greetings, I will start by greeting the parliament as well as the residents. My name is Anna Chiro from Wat 29, under the EFF. Councilor from, Steve Schwed, under the EFF. Now, here's my submission, and I would like to submit it.
Thank you.
I thank you. Ah, thank you.
Uh, greetings, House. Uh, my name is Mariadi Mapeto in Steve Swete, Wat 17. I'm Chairperson of Wat 17. As the EFF, we did not support the bill because as the country, we do not think that we are ready for, administratively, for the bill, both from the IEC and the Parliament, over and above either the political challenges it will be bringing. This is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it's just going to be used for a filtrate oversight and the legislative process by the people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to the collective, them themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put in position, independent candidate must be contest a national general election on the following candidates. The threshold for the nomination of the independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand, and this must be people who are registered to vote, and IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reasons we are saying the threshold must be higher for the wishing to contest is because, is because of it is lower. We are going to have a thousand of candidates for the provincial and the national election, and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from the electoral point of view. The, the deposit that independent candidate must be paid must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties, and it must not be refundable as the exclusion of independent candidate will come with cost, and people who wishes to stand should be not, be taking chances. Those who contest individual candidate, independent candidate and get higher voters that is required to get a weight in Parliament must forfeit their remaining voters because they will have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. We strongly discourage a by-election to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from the Parliament or legislature because it's such as permitted. The country will permanently be election, I submit, thank you.
Thank you. Greeting to the committee and everyone. My name is Elvis Malangu. I'm from Steve Swete, Wat 26. Also a councillor in the Steve Swete municipality. I'm a member of the EFF. Electoral Amendment Bill. As a EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both, both from the IEC and the Parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but to themselves. But since the Constitution, since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest national general election on the following conditions. A, the threshold for nomination of the independent candidate must not, must not, must not be less than twenty thou, twenty thousand, and then, and this must be a people who are registered to vote, and the IEC must be able to verify individually, one by one. B, the reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for, for those wishing to contest, it is because, it is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and the national election, and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from the electoral point of view. C, the deposit independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties, and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will, will come with cost, and the people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. D, those who contest as a individual, as a individual independent candidate and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in the Parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they will have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. E, we strongly discourage, we strongly discourage by-elections to replace independent candidate who either die or resign from the Parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will be, will be permanently be in election, I submit, thank you.
Thank you, next.
Raloge. Nabi zolaka ki Lukasumpe la, from Dr. Jez Moroka, Wat 27, and a member of the EFF.
My name is Lukasumpe la.
As such, my submission is as follows. Electoral Amendment Bill, number one, as the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both for the IEC and Parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. Number three, but since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must contest national general elections on the following conditions. Number A, the threshold of, for the nomination of independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand, and this must be people who are registered to vote, and the IEC must be able to verify them one by one. The reasons we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections, and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties, and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost, and the people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Number D reads, those who contest an individual independent candidate and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in Parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest the political party, as political party. We strongly discourage by-elections to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from Parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in elections, I submit.
Thank you, next.
Greetings, fair house. My name is Linasi Wuthuma from Temesila, Wat 28, Mungangala Region Deputy Secretary. As the EFF, we do not support the bill. As a country, we do not think that we are ready to administratively for the bill, both from IEC and Parliament, over and above the political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and legislative process by people who want to use money to control individually that are not accountable to the, to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, a position independent candidate must contest national general election, the following conditions, to, on the following conditions. A, the threshold for the nomination of independent candidate must not be, must not be less than twenty thousand, and this must be people who are registered to vote, and IEC must, must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reason we are saying this threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest, it is because it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections, and that will be, will be impossible to efficiently administer from electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties, and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost, and people wish to stand should not be taking chances. Those who contest as individual independent candidate and get higher vote than is required to get a weight in Parliament must forfeit the remaining vote because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. E, we strongly discourage by, by election to replace independent candidate who either die or resign from Parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in election, I submit, thank you.
Thank you, next.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone who's here.
My name is Angelina Zolady, Wat 10, Emma Lashen.
And PR Councillor.
And PR Councillor.
Elect, electoral, electoral amendment bill. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both the IEC and Parliament, over and above other political challenges it will, it will bring. The bills, the bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it, it is just going to be used to inflect oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest national general election on the following conditions. The threshold for the nomination of independent candidate must not be less than twenty thousand, and this must be people who are registered to vote, and I, and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it, it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national election, and that will be impossible to effectively administer from an electoral, electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties, and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidate will come with cost, and people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Those who contest as individual independent candidate and get higher vote than is required to get a weight in Parliament must forfeit their remaining vote because they will have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as political party. We strongly discourage by-elections to replace independent candidate who either die or resign from Parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in election, I sub.
Thank you, next.
Eh, thank you, Mr. Chairperson, timekeeper, adjudicator, as well as the member of the Parliament. My name is Delakato Prudence Chabango from Wat 25 in Steve Swete, and I'm the treasurer of the branch. Electoral Amendment Bills, as the EFF, loud and clear. We do not support the bill because as, as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and the Parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. Number two, the bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. Number three, but since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest nation, eh, national general elections on the following conditions. Three point A, the threshold for the nomination of independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand, and this must, and this must be people who are registered to vote, and the IEC must be able to verify them as, eh, sorry, the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. Three point B, the reasons we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections, and that will be impossible to effi, efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. Three point C, the deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties, and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost, and people who wish to stand should not be taking, taking chances. Eh, three point D, those who contest as individual independent candidates and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in Parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and options to contest as a political party. Three point E, we strongly discourage by elash, eh, we strongly discourage by-elections to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from Parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanent, permanently be in elections, and I submit, thank you.
Thank you, next.
Eh, good day, everyone. My name is Emi Debo Rompe la from Emma Lashemi, Wat 34, under the organisation of the EFF. Standing here to submit, eh, my submission. Okay, it states thus. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as the country, we think we do not, we think we, we don't think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and Parliament, over and above other political, other political challenges it will bring. Number two, this bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. Number three, but since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must contest national general elections on the following conditions. Three A, the threshold for the nomination of independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand, and this must, these people, oh, this must be people who are registered to vote, and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because it is low. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections, and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties, and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost, and the people who wish to stand should not be taking chances, no chance takers. no chance takers. Those who contest as individual independent candidates and get higher votes than it is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. We strongly discouraged by election to replace individual candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in elections. I thank you.
Thank you. We are going to invite hands. And we'll work towards closing the meeting. But those who still want to raise hands, they will do that. I'm cautioning that there are sufficient submissions that have been done. We'll invite hands. And we'll check if there's any other hand to be made so that we're able to accommodate all of you. A lady who made submission on behalf of EFF, I think. Who made an intro and submitted a written submission. I'm saying there's a, our colleague who made an intro on the EFF submission but submitted the written, she did not read the entire submission. She just said, no, I support the submission and then she left. I'm sure we observed it.
Yes, I gave that submission to the parliament officials.
Yes, now I'm giving example because we're working towards closing. I'm saying if there's members who want to do the same, you can do it instead of reading the entire, but if you want to read, you can read. I'm just advising for speedy process. But we're not saying you must do it, we're just advising. If you want to read the entire notes, in terms of five minutes, you must do that freely, but we're just advising because we're working towards a closing. And any other member, and any other political party or individuals, you must assist so that we're closing. I might identify the next ten hands. Number one. Number two, yes. Number three. Number four. Number five, at the back. Number six. Number seven. No, you don't raise your hand when you're on the line. You must, yeah, seven, Wuti, yes. Number eight, at the back, yes. Number nine, Mama. Number ten. So we only have nine hands. Okay. You can start with.
Greetings, everyone. I am major printer Sekuti from ward twenty-two, Lefiso. I'm the member of the BEC. I'm from the African National Congress. The ANC has always supported the proportional representation system as it is best suited to a country as diverse as ours in terms of race, class, language. It ensures that every political viewpoint shared by more than one quarter of one percent of population is able to find representation in parliament and speak on behalf of the constituency. We have never supported a first past post constituency system as it is very difficult to reach the same level of diverse representation when only one or maybe a half of people are selected to represent distinct geographical area. Each geographical area has its own level of diversity and division. The PR system has meant that parties, that even small parties that get as little as zero comma two five percent and of the vote remaining in parliament and have a voice in every legislature. The FF+ is a good example of a party that has been accommodated peacefully and constructively because of the PR system since our democracy started, but has never reached two comma five percent of the vote. It is hard to imagine them or any other small party winning constituency seat when the constituency, if there was two hundred. For parliament, we'd have least hundred thousand voters. The PR system also allows better representation of women, youth, and other marginalized groups. The ANC supports option one as included on the amendment bill. We broadly support it as the best option for implementation, for implementing Constitutional Court order. We do, however, have some very serious concerns about the practicality of the system as it is currently contained in the bill. We urge the whole Affairs Committee to consider these challenges carefully as they may cause unintended consequences that can harm our democracy. We wish to avoid further court challenges by either independents or parties that may feel disadvantaged. We also wish to maintain the principles in the constitution that demand from us that our electoral system reflects overall proportionality. Two, we have problematic long ballot caused by too many independents and parties on one ballot. We are very concerned that new system can result in a very long ballot papers that in practical, for example, if we have forty-eight national parties as in twenty nineteen and another two hundred individuals who stand as independents, the ballot papers will need about ten pages with twenty-five names per page. A multi-page ballot is a big problem for voters. The IEC and parties, it will need much longer time to vote as voters must search for names of their parties or independents among many other names, amongst many other names. A ten-page booklet for a ballot will mean the IEC needs to have much bigger budget for printing, distribution, and stuff. Even ballot boxes will have to be ten times as many as accommodated ballots. Counters will have to check every page of every ballot to make sure it is not spoiled by a voter voting twice. Counting could also take five to ten times as long. We are very concerned that the amendments should find a way to not waste money and time and make elections too complicated and impractical. Ultimately, if voters find it difficult to vote and find their preferred choices on ballots, the election will not reflect the will of the people. You need to review the qualifications to stand as an independent candidate and as a new party. If you do not make it stricter, we can have thousands of candidates. In twenty nineteen, only fourteen of the forty-eight parties made it into parliament. We propose that new parties who do not represent yet, who do not represent yet in a legislature or parliament, an independent candidate, should be able to demonstrate that they have voter support and have so much, some chances of winning a seat. We suggest that the threshold should be at least one-third of the quota needed for one seat in the previous election.
You must work towards.
Come again?
Work towards closing.
We believe independents should compete on the same terms as parties. The ConCord obliges parliament to make amendments to the act as to allow independents to stand against parties in national and provincial elections. It does not force us to change a system that has served the country well and let no voters or parties over contesting that we have free and fair national or provincial elections. We have to make sure that the system stays first simple and practical. A crowded and long ballot can make elections a logistical nightmare. At the moment, parties pay sixty thousand deposits for national and forty-five per provincial, they win back their deposits of the, of they win one seat.
Thank you. Next.
I thank you, the respectable committee. And I also greet everyone on the table in front of us. My name is Johannes Kasha Nemapala. I'm from the village called Lefiso in ward twenty-two.
Dr. J S Moroka municipality.
Under the Dr. J S municipality. I'm also a PR councillor in that municipality. Now, being under the EFF.
Here is my submission. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and parliament, and over and over the political challenges it will bring. Number two. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and legislative processes by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to the collective but themselves. Number three. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must contest national general elections on the following conditions. A. The threshold for the nomination of independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand and this must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, by one, one by one. Gouti, gouti.
One by one?
The reasons we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest it is because if it is lower, we are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. C. The deposit that independent candidates must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost and people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. D. Those who contest as individual independent candidates and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. Lastly, we strongly discouraged by elections to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in elections. I submit.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you very much. My name is Jinaz Chabango from Tembesile Adnisa Bridge, ward nineteen. And then also greeting to the House at large. My submission is as follows. As the EFF, we do not submit the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both IEC and parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. Two. The bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. Three. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest national general elections on the following conditions. A. Threshold for the nomination of an independent candidate must not be less than twenty thousand and this must be people who are registered to vote. The IEC must be able to verify individual, one by one. B. The reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those who are wishing to contest is because if it is lower, we are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national election. That will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. C. The deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties. It must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost and people will wish to stand should not be taking chances. Number D. Those who contest as individual independent candidates and get votes that is required in parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they will have been given a clear and equal opportunity and opportunity to contest as political party. E. We strongly discouraged by election to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because such is permitted, the country will permanently be in election. Thank you. I submit.
Thank you. Next.
Greetings. This is Begumuzi Kotfriskasana from Tembesile, ward four, under EFF. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready to, we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. Two. This bill will not, this bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is going to be used to infiltrate oversight and legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that they are accountable to a collective but themselves. Number three. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must contest national general elections on the following conditions. A. The threshold for the nomination of independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand and those must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. B. The reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest it is because of it's lower and we are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections and that will be impossible to effectively administer from an electoral point of view. C. The deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost and people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. D. Those who contest as an individual, those who contest as individual independent candidate and must get higher votes than it is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. E. We strongly discouraged by elections to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will be permanently in elections. I submit.
Thank you. Next.
Team's House at Large. My name is Margaret Mokwena, ward twenty-three. I'm a secretary from Stiff Chuate Local Municipality. As I was advised wisely, I submit my letter of Electoral Amendment Bills.
Thank you. Next.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Ndombe Motaung from Tembesile Local Municipality, ward eleven. I am here to make my submission. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as the country, we do not As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as the country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and the Parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since our Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest nationally and general election on the following conditions. A, the threshold for the nomination of independent candidate must not be less than twenty thousand. And this must be people who are registered to vote. And the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. B, the reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national election and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from our electoral point of view. C, the deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties. And it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. D, those who contest as individual independent candidate and get higher votes that is required to get a weight in Parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they will have been given a clear equal opportunity and option to contest as political party. E, we strongly discourage by elections to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from Parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will be permanently be in by election. In other words, the person who dies as the member of Parliament who contested as the independent, he or she will be replaced after five years when the next election commence. Thank you. That's my submission.
Thank you, next.
Greetings to everyone. My name is Tavomayila from ward eleven, Emalashen. Admired my submission, electoral amendment bill. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and Parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must contest the national general elections on the following conditions. The threshold for the nomination of independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand. And this must be people who are registered to vote. And the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reason, uh, three B, the reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. The rep. C, the deposit that independent candidates must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties. And it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. The D, those who contest as individual independent candidates and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in Parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they will have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. The last one, three E, we strongly discourage by elections to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from Parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will be, will permanently be in election. Is my submission. Thanks.
Thank you, next.
Thank you very much. Greetings to the panel and all protocol observed. My name is Tabonyatou. I'm representing the African National Congress, Dr. J S Morocco Subregion. The ANC supports the PR system. It supports the PR system also because it also allows better representation of women, youth, and other marginalized groups. The ANC supports option one, is included on the amendment bill. We broadly support it as the best option of implementing the constitutional order. We've got the problem with long ballots caused by too many independents and parties on one ballot. We are very concerned that the new system can result in a very long ballot paper that is impractical. For example, if we have forty-eight national parties, national parties as in twenty nineteen and another two hundred individuals stand for as independent, the ballot paper will need about ten pages with twenty-five names per page. A multi-page ballot is a big problem for voters. The IEC find it difficult to vote and find their preferred choice on a ballot. The election will not reflect the will of the people. You need to review the qualifications to stand as an independent candidate and as a new party. If you do not make it stricter, we have, we can have thousands of candidates. In twenty nineteen, only fourteen of the forty-eight parties made it into the Parliament. We propose that new parties who not presented yet in legislature or Parliament and independent candidates should be able to demonstrate that they have voter support and have some chance of winning a seat. We suggest that threshold should be at least one-third of the quota needed for one seat in the previous election. We believe independents should compete on the same terms as parties, in short. In Parliament, if Parliament is divided into many smaller fractions, forming government is challenging. There is a big danger to using the current formula of seats and a lot of parties come in on less than one seat's worth of votes. Votes required for the quota of one seat has often been between forty thousand and sixty thousand per seat, depending on the legislature and voter turnout. But some small parties have won seats on ten thousand voters in national assembly due to the formula for the largest remainder vote being used to allocate leftover seats. Potentially, we can have many small parties and independents occupy seats that hold the balance of power in legislature and Parliament where no party gets over fifty percent. This is happening at municipal level, often leads to unstable and turbulent collisions. This could be much worse to national and provincial government where government could be paralyzed by small parties and independents who represent only tiny fractions of voters. But who can make stable governance impossible? We propose a two-stages process where all who meet the full quota one seat are awarded a seat, whether as parties or independents. Once no one is left who is entitled to sit based on meeting the full quota threshold, the remainder seats should then be given to the parties that have the highest average of votes per seat won. An independent can obviously only occupy one seat and their surplus votes will be discarded. Any party that has surplus votes should have this added to their total and divided by the number of seats already won by them. The party the highest average will get a remainder seat. Disqualify if cheating, misrepresenting, or manipulating system. No one should be allowed to cheat to get into the ballot paper. If you need to show support, it must be genuine support. If any unrepresented party or independent candidate or anyone working for them fakes or misrepresents signatures... No money or gift or promises of reward or job should be used to secure signature of support. A clear process of making objections to signatures of support should be included in the act, I submit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, next.
Greetings to the House. My name is Lindywakete Gulobe from Tembesileani Municipality, ward twenty-nine, I'm a PR councillor. As the EFF, I'm going to read my electoral amendment bill. As the EFF, we don't, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and the Parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to use to infiltrate oversight and legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put position, independent candidate must contest national general election on the following conditions. The threshold for the nomination of independent candidate must not be less than twenty thousand. And this must be people who are registered to vote. And the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national election and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. The deposit that the independent candidates must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties. And it must not be refundable as the inclusion of the independent candidate will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Those who contest as individual independent candidate and get higher votes than it is required to get a weight in Parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they will have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. We strongly discourage by election to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from Parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in elections. I submit. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
To Melan, Libidjolaga Kisina Majah, Dr. J S Morocco.
My name is Sina.
Sina, yes.
Sina Majah. I'm from Dr. J S Morocco Municipality.
Ward twenty.
Ward twenty. I'm here to submit my letter, being a member of the ANC. And in this letter, it will actually indicate as to how much we support this amendment bill or how much we actually do not support it. And I also like to ask that the days for online submissions be extended. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks very much. It appears we've allowed all of you to make submissions. We are, I'm guided here by my members, or not my members, members of the portfolio committee, that they are satisfied with your submissions. But further, guided me to check if there's any other one who want to make submissions. The last one or said that want to make submissions. Will consider you as the last person to make submission. Because this is your meeting. We are facilitating it, but the meeting agrees that you are the last person to make submission. Then we work on the summary and we close. So you can make your last submission, five minutes, and then we work on the summary and we close. Is that our understanding, members? Okay, thank you. You can proceed?
Yeah, thank you very much. My name is Malla Mlambo. From Dr. J S Morocco Municipality, I'm the branch chairperson of ward eighteen. Mine is very simple. I'm not going to waste much of my time. I'm representing the ANC. I would like to submit two of my submissions that have made to show what is the take of the African National Congress with regard to the amendment bill. Thank you very much. That was what I wanted to submit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We also want to request those that were reading the notes, they could not submit, if they can organize them and submit to our officials when we've closed the meeting. We want to take this opportunity as the portfolio committee and thank you for making your submissions. We thank the political parties and individuals. Now that you've made your submission to the portfolio committee. We have listened carefully and members of the staff have recorded your notes. As I've indicated earlier, the committee does not have a position on the recommendation of the amendment bill. We're going when all public hearings have been concluded. Deliberate on the notes and the submissions as the portfolio committee and consolidate report for submission to Parliament. And when Parliament does consider the report. It will refer to the NSOP. The NSOP will interact with the report. They may take a decision to come back again to consult our people. And after they've processed their own program. On interacting with the report. They will consolidate and make consideration to the NSOP. And then submit it to President of the Republic for assent. We want to thank you and members of Parliament. That you have been disciplined in making your inputs. And thanks all the public hearing we've conducted here in Pumalanga. And thanks all the public hearing we've conducted here in, in Bumalanga. Thanks the staff of parliament. And now the committee is going to conduct public hearing in Houti. The meeting and thanks Honorable Le Rose, Honorable Fander Merve, and Honorable Tgaza for listening to these submissions. Our meeting now has come to an end.